Good evening, everyone. Want to call the East Green Bush Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. This evening's, excuse me, attendance, all members present except for Mr. Dunn. Yes, excellent.
Emily.
And Emily, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, with that, please rise and join me in the buzzer nations. Thank you, everyone. So very special meeting this evening. Great to see our veterans here, our students here, parents, staff. Just wonderful to be able to be back at our buildings, especially Green Meadow, which is close to my heart, because my kids went here and I went here. So wonderful place. Next on the agenda, we have our Columbia High School Student Council reps. There they are.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In our most recent news, we've assembled and sold our pink packs for the last two weeks in October in order to raise awareness for breast cancer. And students were able to wear the items in the pack for a schoolwide pinkout and for the football game that night. These packs are always a hit, and we're so glad that we could provide them again this year. Also, we recently hosted our annual blood drive, where our 17 above students with parent permission were able to give back to our community. We wanted to thank those who donated and those who are working our signup table. This is all for our most recent news, and we also have some big fundraisers coming up for our holiday season, so make sure to keep an eye out. And that is all we have for you tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is our board forum. I'll start at my left with Cheryl. Michelle. Mark. I'm good, I'm good. Jennifer. Not this Jennifer, this Jennifer. Good. Jessie. Joy. Good. I just want to say congratulations to our athletic, our girls' athletic teams, who had some wonderful performances recently, and I hope they keep going. And I know we have athletics program review tonight, and Mr. Jones is here as well, so thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is a public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District, they address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to such concerns during public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the future. Those persons who wish to address the board will be directed by the chair of the meeting, state for their regular name and address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed, the visitor's forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board person, excuse me, will conduct the forum for the orderly efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may consider defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited will be cleared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Does anyone like to address the board this time? Yes, somebody in the back. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jamie Holt. I am a PE teacher at DPS. I have been teaching in the East Green Bush School District since 1998. I am speaking on behalf of the EGTA, and this is my story. I'm standing before you tonight looking a little disheveled. It's not my normal teacher wear, because this is what I wear to work, when I go to work, after work. I work two jobs every day, after school, sometimes before school, every Saturday, and on every vacation we have. I am one of 199 EGTA members who have to work two jobs. And the reason why we have to work two jobs is because our teaching salary does not cover our bills. And my bills, they're average. They're not crazy. They're normal. But my salary doesn't cover them, so I need a second job. It's not a choice. So I'm here because there's a little bit of a problem with this. Because the problem with me working two jobs is that it affects kids. And the reason it affects kids has to do with programming. My programming. Let me explain. I am referring to programming that occurs before and after my teaching day. Typically, my year begins with running club in the fall. And as the school year rolls on, clubs follow, one after the other, all the way until the end of May, early June. My clubs are popular. Very popular, actually. But what happens is, by working two jobs, just to pay my average bills, the programming that I do, that extra programming, it's affected for two reasons. Number one is time. By having to work two jobs, my time is limited. I don't have the time to facilitate programming that's not part of my teaching day. And I don't have the time to plan for those programs that have been part of my teaching world for the past few years. The time just isn't there. It's just not there when I'm working two jobs. The second reason is the fatigue factor. It's simply exhausting. It's underrated in America, but it's real. Working two jobs is exhausting. And adding programming on top of that, the man, the demand of two jobs, it's become, for me, it has become unsustainable. Now, I have done this for the past few years. I have added this programming to my world at school and worked two jobs, but it has become unsustainable. I just, I can't keep it up. And it's, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. I can't keep it up. I worked very hard in my life. I can handle a lot. But I'm also learning to pay attention to my limitations. And this formula of two jobs and added programming has not just become unsustainable for me, but it causes me to lose my sense of self-worth. And when that happens, I become nothing to myself, because I'm trying to be everything to everybody. And I need to find, I need to set boundaries. So because I'm unable to sustain this formula, the end result is, kids are no longer able to receive the added programming that has been part of my world for a period of time. And for me, now, working, this is how working two jobs affects kids. And that's what I wanted to say to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holt.
Good evening, I'm Jared Greco. I teach music at Goff Middle School. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you all today. And this evening, I'm speaking on behalf of the East Green Bush Teachers Association. When I was asked to briefly speak to you at this meeting a week ago, I began to organize my thoughts internally before I would type them up and print them out to read here today. I failed to find the time to do so until last night. Coincidentally, this is my weekly experience that I'm hoping to shed some light on tonight. The reality of being a young teacher in 2023 is unfortunately a very tiring one. Often, when I leave work at the end of my contractual day, I rush to my car and head to the next job for that day of the week. Twice a week, I spend the late afternoon and evening at the mall teaching private music lessons. On Tuesdays, I run trivia games at a local restaurant. During the weekends, I work eight-hour shifts playing weddings and large events in various entertainment groups. Sometimes they are in Lake George or Saratoga. Other times, like this weekend, they take place in Rochester. The time spent away from home while others are recharging is a drain on one's mental health. It makes simple things like groceries, laundry, cleaning, and resting seem unreachable on a day-to-day basis. On Monday evenings, I teach private lessons from my home. That home, by the way, is a one-bedroom apartment. A young teacher in 2023 is tasked A young teacher in 2023 is tasked with finding a way to make ends meet in the midst of rising rent nationwide, an exorbitant housing market even for the most modest homes, and while paying back not one, but two required college degrees at the most predatory prices and interest rates in history. I have many years left of student debt payments, which is what the entirety of my extra earnings go toward. My peers remind me to be smart. I am a Tier Six employee. They say things like, "You need to save for retirement now." "You should save your money and pay off your debt as fast as possible." "Renting is the worst thing you can do. You're just throwing your money away." Which one of those should I start with once I'm 40 and my degree is paid for? I'm exhausted. My brothers and sisters are exhausted, and it can affect our ability to educate despite our best efforts. Each one of us is looking to improve and seeking to be the best teachers we can be. I urge you to consider that we are all looking to do our best as educators and that we are in need of help. Please show our community that teachers are important and education is valued. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Robert West, and I am currently employed as a science teacher at Columbia High School by the East Green Bush Central School District, and I come before you as representative of the EGTA. I would like to take this opportunity to share with you some recent personal experiences of being an educator in East Green Bush. During this past summer, I became aware that a member of the Science Department was leaving his position in East Green Bush for a job in another school district. Hugh Sarno was a science teacher in East Green Bush for 23 years. He and I have worked together during that entire time. As you know, teaching requires a large amount of collaboration between teachers. Hugh and I had a great working relationship. Sharing new ideas, fixing old lab equipment, organizing our shared prep room, and designing new curriculum were all part for the course. We also developed a close friendship. As you also know, teaching demands a huge amount of emotional energy. We all think of the students as part of our larger family, and while we celebrate our students' successes, we also share their struggles. This expenditure of emotional energy causes us to need support from our colleagues from time to time. Over the past 23 years, Hugh and I have provided that support for each other. Hugh and I have also worked outside the classroom, building decks and other odd construction jobs during the summer months to help bridge the gap back to September. Mr. Sarno made a decision, which does not happen often, to leave a district he had worked at for over 20 years. While leaving East Green Bush was not an easy decision for Hugh to make, he did so with careful consideration to better his family's financial situation. Coming to work this year has been very different without my close friend in the classroom next door. Colleagues have come and gone in the past as well, but this year has been very different. As I'm sure you have heard, there's a national teacher shortage. Science-certified teachers in particular are hard to come by. While we have interviewed a few teachers for the vacancy, currently, none of those interviewed could accept the position. A retired member of the Science Department was able to help get us through the first three months of the year. However, there is currently not a full-time replacement for the vacant Science Department position. As a teacher and parent, I feel terribly for the students in these classes. For the past few weeks, there's been a rotating group of substitute teachers. This has put additional work on the Science Department and administration of the high school. We are trying to make the best of things, but it's no easy task. I am very proud of being a teacher, and specifically have always been proud to say I work in East Green Bush. The teachers of this district have worked hard to maintain its position as one of the premier districts in the area. While I knew I would never become a rich man being a teacher, the reward that I have received from friendships I have made and relationships formed with students have made up the difference. I worry that the current economic realities of the teaching profession will force veteran teachers to increasingly make difficult decisions for financial reasons, while discouraging prospective teachers from entering into this most noble pursuit.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Dietrich, and I am a speech-language pathologist within our school district. I would like to speak on behalf of the East Green Bush Teachers Association. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes of your attention. When I started working for East Green Bush at the start of the 2019-2020 school year, I was ecstatic for the opportunity. I knew East Green Bush was listed among the top places to work in the capital region, and I couldn't wait to be a part of it. I wanted to make an impact and positively contribute to learning outcomes for my students and build team camaraderie with my coworkers and my students' families. Over the years of my employment here, I have invested countless hours to our students, school committees, and the larger East Green Bush community. I joined dozens of other district educators in various volunteer roles. Every year, I participate in raking the lawns of our local veterans. This Friday will be my fifth consecutive year supporting this effort. Another annual cause includes sorting and distributing food for struggling local families before holidays. In addition to donating my time, I also give monetary support. When the Backpack Program, which provides weekend meals to food insecure families, is running low on supplies, teachers are often asked to help. I, along with many others, make special trips to the supermarket to donate food that will go directly to our students. We all know that a school's success relies in part on the community's vote to pass the budget each spring in order to invest in educational and recreational resources for our students and to make infrastructure improvements. I participate in the Budget Phone Bank every year to provide community members with information about the proposed budget and to encourage them to vote yes. During the first year of my employment, Mr. Simons began a new committee now called the Global Education Committee. During my time with this committee, I have co-led a six-session book study with other educators exploring racial justice and equity. I also played a role in the One District, One Book Unity and Community Initiative conducted last spring by being part of a group of educators who piloted books, designed activities, and developed ways to engage the community in the effort. Through this work, the committee strives to find ways to celebrate all students, which in turn improves school experiences for everybody. It's a great endeavor that relies heavily on personal time. I believe I've accomplished a lot in my first four years here. I do all of these things in addition to my duties as a speech-and-language pathologist each day. I continue to dedicate my time and efforts because I love my students and I love this community. And I want you to understand that I am not unique. I am only one of hundreds of other East Green Bush educators who go above and beyond for students and the community. Teachers give their time, their money, and their support in so many ways. My employment here has taught me exactly what makes the EG CSD a top place to work. And while it is a number of factors, our teachers are at the top of the list. Thank you.
Just a comment quick, Mr. Wagner, are you the last one?
I am.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Wagner. I live at Two Johnny Place, East Green Bush, New York. And although I am a parent and a taxpayer, I come before you as a member of the East Green Bush Teachers Association. I'm in my 14th year of teaching, and I've been teaching here in East Green Bush since 2015. First, I'd like all the EGTA members present who have received the honor of being a News Channel 13 top teacher to please come stand behind me. As you can see, we have many EGTA members who have gone above and beyond their jobs and have been recognized by their students who nominate them to become top teachers. I too have had the honor of being recognized as top teacher by News Channel 13, and I was also recognized by our district to be New York State Teacher of the Year. I made it to the second round out of hundreds of teachers throughout the state. I'm also proud to be the secondary vice president of the people standing behind me and all of our members, many who have received the honors, other honors, I should say, like YMCA Educator of the Year, Rensselaer County Teacher of the Year, inductions into the East Education Hall of Fame, and many other honors from students, parents, and the community. Most of you on the board know me from my role in the union. Some of you know me as we serve on many committees together. One of those committees is the advocacy committee. I've helped organize with you all, with students. We had a massive public forum in 2020 to help fix state aid. I think maybe we had something to do with that. I've been lobbying with you. I've gone to DC trips with you. We've done lots of advocacy together. Many of you may also know me from my role as community outreach. That's how I started in the union. Me and my union brothers and sisters have consistently done, throughout the years, all these things. I personally have organized fundraising to battle breast cancer, organized to help out food banks in Nassau, organized outreach to our local veterans. Those are honoring veterans today. Thank you for your service. For the past seven years, on Veterans Day, we would have group, we'd get groups in town to join together to rake the lawns of local veterans. When we first started out, we had a handful of lawns. We're now up to 20 lawns. We have over 200 people showing up. It's a testament to the power of our profession and to the generosity of the community of East Green Bush. My union brothers and sisters consistently have phone-banked to help ensure our budgets have passed, many by a large majority, and we have helped the district every single day in our job performance that has led our district to be number-one rated school district two years running by the Times Union. We do all of this because we care about our students, we care about our community. In fact, teachers are the most selfless people I have ever known and have the biggest hearts out of anybody I know. But our profession is hurting in more ways I could even list here tonight, and you've heard. We are hurting emotionally, mentally, and financially. We have almost 200 of our almost 400 members who have to work multiple jobs to make ends meet. When I started here, I was working part-time at Albany Medical Center. I left that job in 2016, but when I thought I wouldn't have to work multiple jobs, COVID hit. And I recently took on a second job at state ed to supplement my pay. I worry that people have relied too long on the kindness and generosity of teachers and our big, big hearts, and have failed to see that there needs to be an investment made in education and educators. There is a nationwide shortage of teachers, and burnout is high among our profession. This board has often recognized how amazing our teachers, librarians, school counselors, physical occupational therapists, social workers, psychologists truly are, and I hope this board can continue to recognize what helps make East Green Bush the amazing school district that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the board this time, during public forum? No? All right. I appreciate the EGTA and members speaking on behalf of their membership and talking about the things that they do on a daily basis. The board appreciates and recognizes the work of all our staff in the district and how much we appreciate them, as you can see by the pouring of support here and the events that we have today. It's a great community, and we do appreciate the things that you do. Everyone does. Our parents, our families, our staff, everyone that contributes to the district, so thank you. With that, I will turn, we will end our public forum, and I'll turn over to Mr. Simons for reports and presentations.
Yes, every time we come to Green Meadow, Mr. Garab and the faculty and staff and the students and the families prepare a very special presentation. So we're very pleased, as Mr. Buno said, to be here this evening. I'm going to turn the program over to Green Meadow Principal, Dan Garab. Mr. Garab.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simons. On behalf of the entire Green Meadow community, first and foremost, I would like to welcome our veterans who are joining us here tonight from the Castleton VFW Post 7337, led by Rick Cosgrave, our commander. Rick. Steven Wiley. Ed Provost. And Paul Hutchings, who I've had the privilege of knowing for many years. I taught side-by-side with his wife, Judy. And Brian Vandewell, who just came from a Cub Scout meeting with his son, and I'm sorry, buddy, I don't know your name. Brian Junior. So thank you for joining us. President Buno, Mr. Simons, thank you very much. Members of the Board of Education, welcome. Our fifth-grade chorus, who will be performing shortly, thank you. You've been very patient. You look very patriotic in your red, white, and blue colors there, and we look forward to hearing your wonderful voices.
Yes.
I'm going to ask Mr. Flanagan, John Flanagan, is a second-grade teacher here at Green Meadow. For many, many years, Green Meadow has had a tradition of honoring our veterans. We host annual Veterans Day Assembly, as many of the schools in our district do. We're quite proud of ours. We participate in Patriot Flight. Mr. Flanagan organizes a great Flag Day ceremony, and there's other things that we do throughout the year and to help our veterans. And tonight, we really wanted to recognize our veterans, but not just the Green Meadow staff, because the Board of Education and our central office administration also appreciates what you do. Little history here. When COVID hit, students were encouraged not to ride the bus, and that presented us with a challenge. Where are we going to park all of these cars, get kids in and out? I'm really trying to brainstorm, and I'm chatting with my good friend, Mr. Alvy, one day. Where's Mr. Alvy? There he is. And he's, we're looking at Google, Google Map. Of course, we're not together, or, you know, miles apart. He says, "You should put a road right in there." And I'm thinking, "This'll never fly." I see Mr. Simons. I quick throw the idea at him. He says, "Sounds good. I think we should do it." And this is the quickest I've ever seen anything move. And I would say a week, a week, maybe two, we had a road back there. And we've joked around a little bit over the years, you know, what are we going to call the road? You know, Aldi Alley, Simon Street, Danny Drive. But we came up with a better name, and we're going to share that with you soon. But to give you a little hint, Mr. Flanagan is going to share some pictures that kind of led us to our name.
Hi, thank you. John Flanagan, second-grade teacher, also student council advisor. I share with Mrs. Kouchay, and we are in charge of the Veterans Day Assembly. And when we COVID hit and we came back and we didn't want to give up our Veterans Day because they're everything to us and they deserve us to have a beautiful assembly to them. So I talked to Rick too, and what can we do? Talked to Mr. Garab, what can we do? And we went outside with this new road. We didn't know how it was going to go. Mrs. Kouchay and I, we spent a lot of time looking at it. We got to bring music out, the kids, can we keep them separated? But it turned out wonderful. We had the whole road, and you can see by the pictures, American flags, over 100 flags that kind of went on both sides of the road. Fantastic job, the veterans, they, from Questar, they did their parade of colors all the way up. We had some kids helping, and then we had all the veterans come through, and we said their name and who their granddaughter or daughter or son was, and they came with their cars, they're waving. It was just a wonderful, wonderful day. If you go to the next one, Mr. Garab. As you can see, some of the pictures, you see the students on the side waving, patriotic, waving their flags. Sweet Mr. Bernard, 99 years old. He was last year, United States Marine Corps, and last year was at our assembly, and when they come into the room... year was at our assembly. And when they come into the room, into the gym, they start in the back, and they come all the way up. And this is 99-year-old. We asked him if he wanted a wheelchair, and he said, no Marines taking a wheelchair. He walked all the way from the back, all the way up to the front. Sweet man. So, anyway, talking about the names, and I came up with the idea of calling it Veterans Way. I talked to Mr. Couche about it. We discussed it. Okay, what's our next steps? Went to Mr. Garab with our idea, just to give something that when we're gone, and for hopefully another 50 years, when we do 100-year ceremony here, the Veterans Way will be here, all for these guys. These guys are representative of all the veterans that come every year to our Veterans Day, and we just want to do this in their name. And so, we talked about it, and it came to the board, and the rest is kind of history. And we're going to present another picture here. And we have the sign back here, and we're ready for tomorrow, and we're going to unveil the new street sign this evening. Did you want to invite some people up?
I would like to invite some folks up to help us unveil the sign. Before we do that, if I could respectfully ask the board to pass the resolution formally dedicating this. And I'd also like to point out, we do have a Board of Education member who is a veteran, Mr. Mark Mann, who comes to our assembly many, many years. He's in high demand, so he goes to a lot of assemblies. But, Mr. Mann, we appreciate you for your service as well and recognize the service you've provided, not only to the district, but to the country.
Thank you, Dan.
Before we unveil it, I'll turn it over back over to Mr. Buno.
So, I will read the resolution, and then I'll ask for motion to approve the resolution. Whereas the Green Meadow Elementary School shared decision-making team has indicated its desire to show lasting appreciation for the service and sacrifices of veterans residing within our community, and whereas the East Green Bush Central School District Board of Education wishes to honor and pay tribute to veterans within our community for their service to our nation, now therefore be declared, from this day forward, the Green Meadow Access Road will forever be known as Veterans Way. The school administration, faculty, and community of Green Meadow are hereby authorized to arrange an appropriate dedication ceremony. I need a motion to approve that. Mr. Mann needs a second. Jesse, are those in favor?
At this time, if I could have Mr. Simons and Mr. Buno.
Actually, I would actually like Mr. Mann to be present in my stead if he would give me the honor as a veteran. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. And Rick, could we have you come up?
Count of three.
And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Lavoy. Mrs. Lavoy is a retired music teacher from the Goff Middle School, and she's been helping us out to help fill a short-term vacancy, and she's got a patriotic chorus here. It's all yours, Mrs. Lavoy.
Thank you for your service. Because of you, we're free. Because of you, we're free. We remember your love, your heart and bravery, your heart and bravery. We say thank you for all you've done. We celebrate your blood. We recognize your sacrifice and your service to our country. Our deep tenders, the darkness, the brave. Thank you for your service. Today we honor you. Today we honor you. You defended our nation. You fought to see it through. You fought to see it through. We say thank you for all you've done. We celebrate your life. We recognize your sacrifice and your service to our country. Our deep tenders, the darkness, the brave.
Fantastic. That was absolutely wonderful, and I can't wait to hear it again tomorrow at the assembly. Nice job. A quick thank you to the parents for coming out tonight and for all of your support. Your kids are wonderful. We enjoy the time with them. Also, a quick shout out to the Green Meadow PTO. Holly, our PTO president, showed us the sign. I can't take credit for the nice cookies and the signs and the decorations. Mrs. Couche, who does a lot of help behind the scenes, and we still have a lot of teachers here and staff that just put so much in every day into supporting what we do here at Green Meadow. So, thank you very much. I'll now turn it back over to you. And if we could get a quick photo during the break, that would be great.
Yeah, so we'll take a few minutes as a break, board, and partake in the refreshments that have been here and mingle a little bit and talk to the veterans if you want, and thank you, students and the staff who work with them. So, we'll take about five or six minutes, and we'll do that right now. All right. We're now back in session. Thank you, Mr. Garab, and the Green Meadow team for presentation with kids. Great. Great to see everybody. We're quieter than it was a little while ago. Now, on our agenda, Mr. Simons.
I just want to give the board and the community a brief update on our capital project planning. At the last board meeting, which was held at Bell Top two weeks ago, we presented a scope of work and a financial analysis of a capital project that we are bringing forward to the board and the community. We are hoping to bring that proposition to the community in May, at the time when we do our budget vote. Mr. Bickle, myself, and Jennifer Mulligan, our Director of Business and Finance, are now scheduled for weekly meetings on Tuesdays. We had one yesterday with La Bella Architecture Firm, and Turner Construction also joined us yesterday. We talked through some timelines to ensure that we could conduct faculty meetings and get the faculty in each of our respective buildings to review the information if they haven't already seen it. I know some principals were very proactive and shared some of the information with their schools already. So, we have that schedule set up. We added some additional meetings, and with the help of Mr. Stiles, we're going to be revisiting the discussion regarding the library media spaces with the librarians, so that our new architectural firm can consider some of their needs and also present some of the designs that they have done to transform the library spaces into being more flexible and future-driven, and also to be available to use for STEAM, Science Technology, Engineering Arts, and Mathematics activities when needed. We've also heard from the art department. They would like to talk with our architects about some needs in their art rooms. So, Mr. Stiles is setting that up. And if you recall, in the last project, we had engaged our science teachers and our technology teachers in discussions of redesign of their classrooms. The technology rooms were done at Goff Middle School, but we're going to connect with all of the technology teachers, middle school and high school, to see what the needs might be, particularly at the high school. So, those meetings are set up and organized. Additionally, very importantly, La Bella Architectural Firm believes that at the next board meeting, December 6th, they will be able to provide the board with some renderings, drawings of some of the more visible aspects of the project, such as the athletic fields, the library media spaces. And just so you have a visible idea of what some of the design options would be, I know that they have been meeting with Ryan Jones and the coaches, and they actually went around to each field with their landscape architects and engineers to take a look at all of our properties and all of the buildings, not just at the high school, at the middle school, but at the elementary schools as well. So, we expect to present some of those renderings for the board on 6th. Looking for feedback from the board regarding the scope. At the end of the meeting, Jennifer had pointed out that there was still some work that we needed to do to narrow the scope. We're still looking at that. But if there's anything that the board saw in the plan that you would like more information on, if there's anything that you would like us to consider to put in the plan, our timeline would be, we'd like to get that feedback in time for the meeting on December 22nd, because at that meeting, in order to meet all of our obligations legally between now and the proposition, we need to ask the board to approve the SEAKER resolution, which is the environmental requirement. And we've connected today, Pasquale, our architect, with Colleen Heinrich, who's one of our attorneys for our firm, to start that communication process to develop the SEAKER resolution, which is required by state regulation. So, if the board has any feedback sometime between now and December 22nd, we're looking to kind of agree on what the scope of the work would be, so that you can approve the SEAKER resolution and continue to move it forward. There will be public notification requirements that the board will have to approve, the public notification notices that will come later in the spring. There were, I also looked today at what was approved by the board in 2017 for the project and when it was approved, and I sent that information to the Farrar Law Firm and asked them to review those approvals that had been done in the past. And he sent us some recommendations to work with our bond counsel on some of those necessary approvals that the board will be looking at in February likely or March. So, we're working to finalize the scope, get input from our faculty and staff first, and then once the board is comfortable around that 1222 deadline, we'll start having some community meetings and let the community see what we're thinking and weigh in. But that's where we stand right now in terms of the capital project plan.
Well, the best way to give that feedback is to review the larger document with the scope of information on it.
The large sheets that we gave you are pretty complete, and if you want to take a look at those and send me an email, we'd be happy to review all of those issues and bring them to our construction team meeting, which will be Tuesday. And every Tuesday, we're meeting at 1 o'clock. That one right there.
Yep. Sooner or later.
Yes.
Okay. I think it would probably be helpful if you just, even if you don't have any changes in the scope, just say something, just send something to Jeff, say, I like it, or, you know, let's proceed that way. If you have some things you'd like to see, let's make those known as well. Okay. Thank you.
That concludes my discussion of the capital project.
Very good.
At this time, I'd like to invite Ryan Jones, who is our Athletic Director, Director of Athletics, Physical Education, and Health Education, to come forward and present a program review that was done specifically on the athletic program last year. This was a program review that came through the Committee on Curriculum Studies. Mr. Jones worked with the coaching staff to put this together, and I think he will point out that some of the things that occurred, because this occurred last year, that were recommended, we've already done with board support. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Simons. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to present our athletic program review tonight. As we stayed here, it was concluded at the end of last school year, but we have already, you know, jumped on working on things that we reviewed in this program review. Just the first thing to point out is our mission statement. The mission of the athletic program of the East Green Bush Central School District is to develop lifelong skills for students in character, leadership, respect, and sportsmanship. Through the opportunity to participate in athletics, we strive to achieve excellence in both athletics and academics while representing our school community with pride and respect. And this is also right through our code of conduct that we give out to our teams every year, so they go hand in hand with our mission statement. So, I did come up with six goals in this review. I'll briefly go through the goal, and then we have some supporting slides that go along with it. So, goal one, in compliance with the New York State Education Department Framework for Interschool Athletic Athletics and the New York State Learning Standards, our athletic program will continue to provide an educational opportunity in which students can learn and participate in unforgettable experiences that teaches students life lessons and instills values beyond those that can be learned in the academic classroom. Our athletic program goal is to develop lifelong skills for students in character, leadership, respect, and sportsmanship that can carry them throughout their lives. And these bullets here continue to provide meaningful challenges, experiences, and opportunities for student athletes, which enhances and fosters student educational development, establishing core curriculum. You know, just going beyond the classroom, the opportunities that we can provide. Prepare students for life beyond high school as well-rounded and well-versed individuals that are ready to accept challenges and overcome obstacles as a member of an educational institution, trade school, or workforce team. And the last bullet here, continue to evaluate and improve the opportunities that are provided to our student athletes and ensure a quality athletic experience is being offered, enhancing the overall growth and development of our student athletes. I know it's a long goal, but that's kind of our overarching goal that we're striving to do with our athletic program. And along with that, you know, it goes in a little bit of our recognition. Some of the things that we have for our athletes, we have our Athletic Awards Night at the end of each year. We have our college signing days, you know, celebrating what the kids have accomplished, going on to the next level. And then we recently, last school year, put up championship banners that you can see across the top there of all the accomplishments we've had throughout our school district since we started competing for championships. And that's just a few of the things that we've done. Goal number two, create an environment which promotes and encourages positive leadership and sportsmanship while communicating and reinforcing the expectations, guidelines, and policies for coaches, student athletes, and spectators. So, traditionally, you know, we have our athletic code of conduct that gets reviewed. All students must sign that as they're signing up for their athletic teams. You know, we're reviewing that with our student athletes, knowing what the standard is to be a Columbia student athlete. We have our meet the coaches nights. We're promoting sportsmanship through various activities. We're promoting sportsmanship through various activities and things throughout our program. We bring in guest speakers. We have parent education. Just a few of our clips here, you know, we brought in a sports psychologist to our Meet the Coaches Night this year, just to talk about you know, various things that, you know, student athletes or people are dealing with on a daily basis. You know, we had a coaching professional development for the 21st Century Student Athlete. So various things that we're doing to not only, you know, help our student athletes, but also grow our coaches as well. Just touching based on some of our awards that aren't necessarily on the field. We have been a New York State Public High School Athletic Association Sportsmanship Promotion Banner winner several times. That's, the years are up in the top right. The one in the middle, the Community Service Challenge, this is really special because last year, our student athletes won this award. It wasn't even an initiative that we started as the Athletic Department, but that picture there is everyone in that group just happened to be student athletes that took it upon themselves to take part in that cancer research and cancer promotion program. So it just speaks to the student athletes that we have coming through our programs and the great things that they do without even, you know, the guidance of us. They go out there and do things on their own that, you know, really shows how great our student athletes are. And then the other things up here are academic success, scholar-athlete teams, and then our School of Excellence for how well we've done in the classroom. This slide right here just shows community involvement. You know, these reviews are kind of done on five-year cycles, and just, you know, over these five years, you know, the variety of things that we do participate in just shows how great, you know, our student athletes are, our families and our community is. The Adopt a Family Program, participating in the Teal Ribbon Run, helping out at Winter Fest, going to the State Institute with our cheerleading team, our Coaches vs. Cancer Basketball Games, the wrestling team goes to Hope 7 Food Pantry every Thanksgiving to help out. Our teams help out at various road races, and then just other community runs that we've, you know, sponsored ourselves here on campus. You know, it just goes a long way for the community involvement of our athletic programs. Goal Three, continue to review and educate coaches through evaluations, professional development, and collaboration. So, you know, continuing our preseason coaches meetings, you know, educating them on what our expectations are. You know, having mentoring opportunities as well as end-of-season, you know, coaches' reports, end-of-season evaluations, end-of-season meetings with our coaches, and then just providing professional development opportunities. Not only things that we can do in-house, but you know, more sport-specific or more specific things that can help them, you know, directly with their programs. Some of the things that we've worked on with organizational communication and branding. The first picture here is our Family ID Online Sign-Up Program, something that we implemented a couple of years ago. Really beneficial with housing all of our sign-ups in one spot. You know, the next picture there is the Huddle Program that allows us to record game film, and coaches can go back, break game film down, help that for our teams to improve. The next one where it says Columbia High School across the top, that's a streaming service. We have huddle cameras up in our gym now that not only record for our own to, for ourselves to look back on, but you can also stream it for the community to watch in case you can't make a game, things like that, and they can also go back and watch in the archives. The bottom right is our online scheduling system. You know, every schedule for our athletic programs is accessible online. And then the top right's kind of small to see, but some of the branding we've worked on, our new banners across the top of our bleachers that also match our tennis screens on the way into campus, and then our newly assembled bench covers on the turf. So, you know, really putting our brand out there and, you know, enhancing what we're doing here at Columbia. Goal Four, assist the Board of Education Superintendent and District Construction Team to develop a plan to improve athletic facilities. And as we talked, you know, we're planning for our next capital project. We did just, you know, finish up putting in our brand-new turf and track, which is phenomenal. You know, we're just hoping to continue to build off of that. I know that's the goal with our next project. But evaluate each facility, develop solutions, develop cost breakdowns, and develop a plan and timeline, which I know that stuff is going on at the next level. But, you know, we did have the opportunity to speak with some of our coaches, see kind of what needs were on their end. They're the ones on those fields, on those courts, on those, in those gyms, everything it might be on a daily basis. So sometimes what I'm seeing isn't what the coaches see. So, you know, we did get that feedback from the coaches as we're planning going forward. And just wanted to, you know, showcase a few of the things that were done over the last review. You know, Goff, Goff Middle School got their gym floor done. The, obviously, the new turf, you know, put some new coloring out there, looks great. Brand-new track around it, new lighting, new sound system, so it's a great home for us. We have our new scoreboard up there that was dedicated to Mr. Leonard. We also have the new downstairs gym at Red Mill that, you know, came out great. Goal Five is continue to grow our department, and one thing I'm looking at here in the top right is our participation numbers. As you can see, you know, COVID, it really took a hit to our numbers, but as you see, you know, 2023, 2022, 2023, our numbers are back to where they were prior to COVID, so that's great to see. You know, our teams are getting back out there. There's a lot of participation. And just a couple of things, you know, assessing program needs for additional coaches. We were fortunate enough to add four more coaching positions for this school year with assistance for basketball and volleyball. It's been very beneficial so far. Assessing student needs for additional programs and team offerings, you know, just looking at, you know, what the trends are, what's being out there. You know, we are offering our girls' wrestling team this year. It's really a sport that's taking off, so it was a great opportunity to add additional programs that is available to our students. Continue to provide the students with our athletic trainer. I'm sure many of you know Sean, our athletic trainer. He does a great job. But, you know, he does many, he wears many hats, working on our concussion protocol. You know, he does our first aid CPR training. He handles our APP process, but he's on the sidelines almost at every sporting event. He's great, you know, anytime, you know, something happens, you know, he's the first guy to respond. He takes control of the situation. But also just the stuff he does on a daily basis with, you know, injury prevention, as well as, you know, rehab and things like that to get our players back on the field. So, you know, he's very valuable to us. We also had a wellness and fitness coordinator last year. That was something that was added with COVID monies. Our wellness coordinator is actually now one of our PE teachers, so we're not, we aren't utilizing that position at the moment. But in that role for the, you know, last year and a half, you know, had staff wellness classes, providing information to our staff, was doing weight room sessions with our teams just about every day after school, doing open weight room sessions with kids, trying to get PE credit recovery. You know, just various things. So that was very beneficial to our athletic program. And then some of the other things that we do after school, you know, providing healthy eating options. We have started an after-school peanut butter and jelly and chocolate milk program where our, you know, we get things donated for our student athletes to be able to eat well as they're heading out to practice, or just something that gives them a little bit of energy, so that they're ready for that, or they're going in the weight room, things like that. So very beneficial, great things that are helping our kids. And then it's just a few things. You know, we're getting a wellness update with our wellness coordinator previously. We were offering summer workouts. In our last review, since our last review update, our weight room was redone. Our weight room is incredible right now. We can do so many things in there. There used to be a ton of machines in there, which you'd think a ton of machines is great, but actually, we got a lot of the machines out, made it space that, you know, more functional. And we can do a ton of things in there. The bottom left, just highlighting Sean, our athletic trainer. And then the bottom right is actually our wrestling room that for the fall and the spring, we are turning into our cardio room. You know, we did with our new Fit for Life course, that's where we're housing our cardio equipment. We had some portable turf floor put in there. It's just a couple of sections that can come right up. So it's now our multipurpose room and not just our wrestling room, but it's, it turned out great. We're getting a lot of use out of it. And my last goal, Goal Six, continue to build our brand, embrace being lifelong learners, and communicate in a positive and effective manner. You know, and this just goes promoting our programs, and we've done a great job with that. We have a new program that kind of, you know, helps us do that, and I'll show you some of our graphics as we move on. We have our Meet the Coaches Night, you know, we're always highlighting the great things that have happened throughout previous seasons and looking forward to those upcoming seasons. You know, communicating our expectations, and then just continue to support, you know, find support through our booster clubs, our All-Sports Club, and keeping that connection. And the last one there is, you know, something we're really working on is promoting and endorsing community-based relationships with youth teams and charities. It's great to see when our youth programs are out on our facilities and our, especially our kids are getting involved with that. Yeah, I was leaving last night, and you know, the youth soccer groups out there. I know on Sundays, we got lacrosse out there. Saturdays, there's usually football out there. So it's great to see when, you know, our own teams aren't utilizing the spaces that the community can use them and really, you know, set up the future for our Columbia Blue Devils. This is just some of the, the social media showcasing that we've done. You know, our teams are making their own schedules, you know, promoting them, promoting their teams, getting fans there. We do have our three athletic pages, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, and a lot of the teams are taking upon themselves to, you know, make their own pages, so that we can highlight the great things that our student athletes are doing. I just want to point out the connection that we have with the Columbia All-Sports Club. You know, they're very helpful to me and all of our programs. You know, they're the ones that put on our Athletic Hall of Fame every year. They're the ones that sponsor it. You know, they helped us with our scoreboard. They get us signs for our championship teams or athletes. They do a lot of things. They help out with dances. So, you know, they're very helpful to us. You know, the bottom right, those are some of the championship t-shirts they got for the soccer teams last year. So it's a great organization that, you know, we're very thankful for. And here is just a few of our athletic program strengths and weaknesses that we pointed out throughout the review. As Mr. Simon says, when I was starting, we were fortunate enough that we've actually kind of already tackled half of our weaknesses. We're starting to, you know, include more technology. We're doing things with facilities, stuff like that. So it's been very beneficial and, you know, we hit the ground running with it, and we're just going to continue to improve on, you know, the things that we've already started. Just to point out a couple of things as we finish up here, some of our program achievements. This is from, starting from last fall, a couple of our sectional championships. I just added the most recent one in the middle. There is our girls' volleyball team that just captured the Section Two Championship last weekend. Our girl soccer team is in there from the past two years, back-to-back champions. Boys' soccer last fall, and then we have girls' track last winter. We also just recently had these two teams right here. Our Game Day Cheerleading Team just went to the state championship last weekend, did a great job representing our school in Section Two. And in the bottom there, this is from last weekend, our girl soccer team won the regional championships and will be representing us in the state final four this weekend out in Cortland. And as I'm sure many of you know, last spring, our baseball team captured the 2023 state championship, which was very exciting. And, you know, we're hoping, you know, some of our other teams might be following their footsteps this, the end of this fall. And then I just wanted to leave, you know, here's the home of the Blue Devils, you know, a field that we take a lot of pride in. You know, it's great to see all of our student athletes out there on a daily basis. You know, not only are, you know, our PE classes out there all day, but, you know, as soon as school gets out, you know, this area is filled with our student athletes and, you know, it's a place that we call home. So we're very fortunate, and, you know, we continue to, we hope to continue to win championships and things like that on these fields. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Does the board have any questions regarding the athletic program this time?
So I have one. Ryan, what do you think is your biggest obstacle in trying to achieve some of your, your goals? You know, in the next, between the next cycle?
Yeah, so part of it will be, you know, just continuing to build our culture, getting, you know, our entire group going in the same direction. You know, from the top on down, it starts with me, and then it goes to our coaching staff, our support staff, and then just creating that culture for all of our student athletes, you know, to be in a great organization moving forward. And you know, I think we are in the right direction at the moment. But, you know, I think there's always room for improvement, but I, I think, you know, we're kind of moving that way and just make sure everyone's on board.
During the break, Ryan and I had a chance to chat a little bit about culture and talk about the football team and the, you know, the ups and downs they had, but could you share that quick story about the sideline?
Yeah, so we had a playoff game up at Burnt Hills, and, you know, the game wasn't going in our favor, but as we were, you know, the final, you know, clock ran out and teams are going to lineup. The guy that was doing the chains on our sideline turned to me, it was, you know, Burnt Hills, either parent or, you know, someone associated with Burnt Hills turned to me and was very, you know, appreciative of our, of our team, our coaching staffs, who were very respectful. Our coaches were very positive. You know, the game wasn't going our way, but, you know, they were still out there playing hard all the way to the end, and, you know, he was very complimentary of our, you know, our coaching staff and how positive our sideline was.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, that's kind of culture we want to bring from the top down for all our teams and work hard, play with pride, win or lose.
Yeah, absolutely.
Be sports, sports people, sports women, sports men.
Absolutely.
And, you know, make the programs the best they can be and the, and the coaches the best they can do to teach our kids.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan, can you make a quick comment about the swim team? The board approved the swim team this year, and then maybe say a little bit about flag football?
Yeah, so, so this, this fall, we participated in girls' swimming. We had four, four members on the team that was over with Troy in Irwin Park. I think it was a great experience for our student athletes. This past Friday was the sectional championships. We did have one of our swimmers who was a place finisher at the sectional championships. She finished third in her event, so very exciting. You know, I was able to go over to Shannon and see that, and I was, you know, it was nice to see the parents, and there was actually a parent from years ago who said, you know, you know, we're really happy there's a team there, would have, would have saved me some money a long time ago if it was around what my kids went through. So, you know, it's been a great start. This winter, we're offering the boys' opportunity for the merged swim team with Troy and CBA. So that starts up next week, and I, I know we have a couple of our students that are excited for the opportunity. And then what was the, the last part?
We've had, we're having discussions with the suburban council regarding.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, flag football has really taken off, and I think throughout the state, it's already taken off, and in our area, it's, it's just starting to get here. Troy High School had a team last year. They kind of had to travel all over the place to find competition, but the suburban council, I think, you know, a few other of the, the schools in Section Two are, you know, really thinking about it. I think the suburban council probably will be up to like eight teams that are committing for this year. So, you know, I think it would be a great opportunity for our kids is, you know, I think it's another sport that, you know, it's going to be offered in the spring, another opportunity for kids to participate, and I think it's another sport that's going to, you know, take off.
Are we looking at boys and girls, or just boys at this point?
So it is just for girls right now. It's girls' flag football, yeah.
It's a program sponsored by the New York Giants.
Yeah, so the New York Giants are involved, and they're really looking to help, you know, get it jump-started in our area. You know, they're actually offering, you know, some form of money to the groups that are involved to help, you know, pay for equipment or pay for, you know, coaching, whatever it might be. So, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, might help.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a Olympic sport, right, in like 2028? So maybe we'll see a couple Columbia alumni there.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe. But that'd be great.
So, thanks, Ryan.
Did you say that there's a, there's a, a girls' modified wrestling team as well?
So right now, modified wrestling is just co-ed, but within our league, we are exploring the opportunity of, you know, we have our varsity girls' wrestling team now. Across the league, we're talking about, all right, can we have our modified levels wrestlers, you know, be in the same room with our girls' team? And then they go to the matches with the girls' team, but then they're, at that point, they're just paired up with, you know, the other modified level athletes. So that's conversations that we've had in our meetings as, you know, as the suburban council. You know, we're, we're trying to help grow the sport of girls' wrestling. You know, we want to make sure that they, you know, they have those opportunities, and yeah, so we're, we're exploring that. It'll be tricky with getting everyone in the same room and, you know, making sure, you know, the modify level's not mixing with the high school level. But it's definitely something that we're looking into that we really think will help build the sport.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent photos. All the opportunities we're giving students that are different than they've had, so we appreciate that.
Oh, thank you very much.
Ryan?
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Take care. Good night. All set, Mr. Simons?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item, discussion items. There are three of them. First one is a community eligible provision school lunch program. This came up conversation about providing potentially free lunch to all, apparently, and just some, just some background on, maybe some of the options, right, Shannon?
Yes.
And Colleen's here too.
Yep. Thank you. So I'm going to invite Ms. Wise, our food service manager, to come up. So on October 6th, the New York State Ed Department had announced the expansion of the community eligible provision and has provided some unique opportunity for the East Greenwood District to reach some of our buildings. So I'm just going to have Ms. Wise walk through some of the information. You do have a printout. walk through some of the information. You do have a printout of the memo and some additional data to refer to.
Sure. So, thank you. And yes, in October, the USDA had announced, they lowered the threshold for CEP from 40% down to 25%. And this is really what's getting a lot of attention right now. A lot of schools are announcing that they are offering free meals. What's really made this possible for us to take a look at in our district is something that happened back in May when the governor announced additional funding for CEP schools to kind of bridge that gap and reimburse the schools at the free rate for all meals served. So we did quite analysis of our application. We're allowed to apply as a group, as an entire district, or just as individual schools. So I took a look at how we could reach the most amount of students in our district, which is really the goal of CEP. And unfortunately, we don't qualify as district. Two of our buildings qualify on their own. Those are Sackett and who we provide meals to, and DPS. When I started to look at the numbers, if we apply as a group, I was also able to get DPS, or I'm sorry, Goff and Red Mill in that application. And we were able to get, get the application with about 25.18%. So we just made it. But that, that presents a unique situation for our district that we're not able to offer the free meal program to all the buildings, just to those four buildings.
Constitutes about 40% of our students though.
Yes, it's roughly 1800 students.
When you combine demographically the student data to meet that threshold of 25%, the only combination of schools within our district is Goff, the second center which we serve, which is right behind this building, which is Questar, DPS and Red Mill. So together as an aggregate, they're just over the 25% threshold, which constitutes about 40%. One of the things that is problematic about it is the fact that the other schools wouldn't be eligible. However, the fact that all of the kids go to Goff Middle School and all, at some point, this is a four-year approval.
This is a four-year cycle.
Once it's approved, it's a four-year cycle. So over the next four years, there's still an opportunity for potentially looking at our own budget, looking at how the state might change this. This has been an advocacy point. So I think it's worth doing. My recommendation would be we do it now, get the four schools approved. We have to have the application and by December 15. And then we continue to work to see what we can do from a local level within our budget, but also in working with advocacy for the state to see what can be done to have equity for all schools. But I wouldn't want to lose the opportunity for the 40% of the families that have the kids in those four locations to benefit from this. And I think particularly if you have a parent, if you're a parent that has a child at Goff and a child at maybe one of the other elementary schools that isn't eligible, you're still, you're still saving that family some resource.
Right. And we'll continue to, we're very proactive about trying to directly certify our students. So this number is based on students who qualify through SNAP or Medicaid. So even when we receive income applications, we try to directly certify that student. As soon as we learn of a new student entering our district, we try to directly certify them. So we'll continue that process and continue to look at our data. And we can always start a new four-year cycle at any point. So we could continue to analyze our data. It's based on April 1st data. So this April 1st, I'll, I'll look at it again and see if, you know, we can capture more students and, and continue to take a look at the application and see how we can get the maximum benefit to our students.
Quick, quick question, Ms. Wise. Could you tell me how, how much it costs to, to eat during the day for the students? And if a student can't afford to pay, what would occur in that instance?
What it costs to eat each day? It's $2 for breakfast, K8, and it's $2.50 for breakfast at the, the high school. And it's $3.25 for lunch, K5, and $3.50 for grade six through 12. What happens if a student can't afford that? We really do our best to do our outreach. So directly certifying any, all of our students multiple times a year, there's a download we can get from the state education department. It's required three times a year. I've done it probably four or five times already, just trying to get as many students as possible. We, we do outreach with income applications and hope that as many people who might qualify will apply. We do have an anti-shaming policy. So if a student comes through, they're not directly certified, they haven't applied, they don't have money, we still do need to feed that, that child. And we do that. We reach out to the families, you know, to, to kind of not only try to collect the balance to keep our program operating, but to also see if they need any assistance and provide them an application. You know, I build relationships with social workers and I actually just talked to some social workers this week about trying to just, just make sure these families are getting everything they need from us. So we will still always provide the students a meal. We don't have that conversation with our students about the, the negative account balances. And we, we do outreach to the parents just to make sure they know they need to apply and, you know, if there's anything we can do to assist them.
Wouldn't at some point, those kids all that funnel through the middle school funnel to the high school?
Yes.
So looking at the data on a regular basis is important.
Right.
So can, but we can't include the high school?
We can't right now. The high school, they're, on the, the information we put together, you can see the percentages of the individual buildings. The high school is, you know, we're going to continue to look at that data and see if we can get them to even just 22% maybe. You know, they don't need to be at 25% individually. But if we could get the high school, you know, a little bit closer, we may be able to include them. So yes, I mean, it, we are going to have some unique challenges with going through a period of not paying and then to paying, but we've, we've kind of dealt with that with COVID also. You know, all the students were free during COVID. We had to kind of revert back to paid. So just, I think informing the families and communicating that clearly should.
I actually think the struggle will be more in the elementary schools where some of them haven't, some of them don't. That's, that's going to be.
Getting it started.
It's going to be a challenge to explain that, I think, because you still have, you know, inequity.
Right. No, I agree. And, and, you know, I think there's advocacy, there was a lot of advocacy to try to get meals for everyone. And that didn't happen. This happened. And now I think they're still seeing that this isn't really working either. There's a lot of inequity in it. So there are, you know, New York State School Nutrition Association, Hunger Solutions, there's a lot of people now that they've, the USDA has done that, this, and then New York State has put the extra funding down. They're saying, well, this isn't, this isn't working for schools like East Green Bush or some other schools in the area where only a few of our buildings qualify.
Dr. Cruz from Questar, the district superintendent, has a regular meeting with their, with the committee chairs. And I'm one of the committee chairs. I'm the chair of the advocacy committee. And she had brought to our attention that state education department wanted to remind school districts regarding the CEP application deadline. And I pointed out to her that it's a really great thing for some districts, but it, but it creates an equity issue for our schools. And she said she was going to deliver that message back to the commissioner of education. I also spoke about it at last Friday's New York State Council of School Superintendent's legislative meeting with the governor's representative. And I said, you know, this is great that you're making progress forward. But I think everybody realized during COVID that, that feeding the kids is, is tandem with, in tandem with the academic achievement. And with the inflationary costs that everyone's dealing with, we would love to have, you know, all of our students qualified, but the way the rules are set up right now on the data, they just don't.
Right.
So we're going to continue to keep beating the drums to try to get this to be the same issue with PK, to get this to be to the point where all of our students and all of our schools can benefit.
I, I just wanted to, to share briefly that like, you know, I think everybody, I do support, you know, feeding the, the kids, you know, across the district for free, you know, like that, that's just my position that, you know, if there's an opportunity, if there's a way for us to find room, you know, in our budget, I like to, to, to think of it like everywhere that we spend is an opportunity for us to save. And that's where we can make priority items. Like I, I think that, you know, feeding our kids. So, so when we talk about like anti-shaming, I, I think there's no better anti-shaming policy than free lunch for everyone, you know? So that way, if, if you go to a free lunch school, it's, it's not a different type of school than the one that pays. So, you know, I, I just 100% support it. You know, I, I do, I, I can appreciate the tempered approach, you know, towards approaching it in, in the advocacy perspective. It's, it's, it's just from, from, from my perspective, I, I would just say, well, let's, let's do it and figure it out, you know, later how, how, how we make it all work.
The, the difficulty with doing it for everyone now is both a financial and a legal consideration. We didn't budget for, we budget every year and it's actually less money than what we've had to do in the past. We budget every year for a general fund transfer to cover a deficit in the lunch program. And that number was around $250,000.
I'm sorry.
What was the number of, amount of money that is in the current budget?
200,000.
200,000 dollars. So once the budget is passed, that's not considered an emergency expense. So, A, I don't know at this point in the year if there is, is room within the budget to offset that. And legally, we can't do it without voter approval because the budget basically has the effect of raising the budget.
Right. We wouldn't be able to increase that transfer out of the general fund into the school lunch.
It's a timing issue.
Yes.
But we would be able to consider it for the upcoming academic year.
I talked to Mike about putting that on as one of the categories of district priority that you would like to look at, along with the school resource officer program, the, some of the issues around.
Right. You'll see that.
Lunch. And there was a third one that, I can't remember right now. PK, yes. Don't read into that. I just.
I remember.
So we're, we'll be talking about it. We can't, you know, it'll all come out in terms of the determinations that we can make regarding the budget and revenues. So.
Can I ask a question? When we talk about the transfer from the general fund, that's just to cover what we don't end up collecting. Is that correct? That's the $200,000?
That $200,000 is an automatic transfer into the school lunch fund on an annual basis.
And is that because our expenses are higher than what we, you know, spend early in the season?
Right. I mean, yes, generally, yep.
It's a difference between the expenses, what people pay for lunch and the reimbursement.
Yeah.
And we do have some uncollectible in there.
We do always have school lunches that, payments that have not been able to be collected.
So your, your, your memo here includes that it would be an additional 344? That is above the 200 and what you assume would be the addition of free meal, free lunch for.
Yes, for 23, 24. So basically, the paid meal revenue for the schools, the buildings not covered, is estimated at about $573,000. And that additional 300, about 6, we're estimating the impact would be about 60% of the paid meal revenue or 344,000. The, the meal reimbursement rates are higher than what our paid rates are. So there would be some additional revenues that would come in from the buildings that are on CEP status.
So you asked the question, you're not, it's not permissible to allocate any funds for lunch transfer or even to pay for it outright?
There's no mechanism to increase the transfer out of the general fund into the school lunch fund to make up for the lost paid revenues by providing free lunch.
Until the next budget's.
Until the next budget cycle.
Well, that's weird. Unfortunately.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify here. I don't really understand the math. So you're, you're, you're assuming that that's, that it is a 60% uptick or that, I'm, I'm just confused because when we say free lunch for all, and maybe I need some educational on this, every child, every student isn't going to participate, right? Or are we assuming every child is going to participate?
We, we anticipate a 20% increase in the paid rate. I think there's 60% in the memo was for the remainder of the school year.
This school year.
So 60% of the school year remaining, we would estimate the cost would be an additional $344,000.
From January to June. Yes, that's correct.
So then we can budget for next year, basically, right? So that, sure, we can kind of be, be closer to the number we want, we need to be if we offer this?
We, we would need to increase the transfer out of the general fund.
Yeah. So about half a million or $600,000. So that, so for 23, so for 24, 25, we're looking at potentially $600,000 or so.
And the other, right. And the other factor too is increased demand. So when you're offering free lunch, obviously there'd be more people participating and.
Even more. But we may need a couple staff members. I don't know exactly where.
Additional staff.
We have to project an additional expense.
Additional cost. And increase food cost as well.
Do we see an increase during COVID, you know, when it was free? Did we see more people buying at that point?
We, we did. We saw, I actually took a look back. What we had projected in those numbers you have, we projected a 20% increase in the paid meal category. I took a look at, at our numbers in COVID and we saw a 22% increase. So it's, it's pretty comparable with, with our estimate.
Well, it's, it's one of our priorities.
Yep.
We have to look at, you know.
It may wind up, you know, being an optimist, it may wind up that the state makes some movement and direction on this issue and.
Right.
And recognizes that.
It's a legacy we help.
It's not able to be done in all districts, particularly districts with five elementary schools, a middle school and a high school that have different, different, slightly different demographics in terms of the student population.
Now, I think I heard Able Park is every, every building was eligible.
Yes.
Because that.
That they have a higher, they have a higher amount of students that qualify for free lunch based on SNAP and Medicaid. So that's what we're looking at. We're not, you know, the income applications aren't part of this. It's really just those students who are directly certified.
Yeah. And I think it's important to note that, right, when we talk about equity and what did that mean? Equity sometimes doesn't mean that everyone gets the free lunch, right? It means that the people who need, you know, the lunch and, and that extra people we, you know, can, can assist that, you know, that, that's, that's true, you know, equity. It's not always a quality.
Level of playing field.
Right, right. So I think we should probably dig into that and, and, you know, keep that in our mind when we, when we talk about things like this.
Yeah. Good point.
I just have one more clarification. So if I understand correctly, you can go forward, you know, from tonight, look at certifying those four schools you mentioned, and then we will revisit this. And hopefully, I guess by the time we put the budget together, we'll have some sense of how it's being used and some better sense of what those numbers might be if we consider doing it across the board.
Right. I think, you know, even the 20% is kind of a low estimate. I think other schools have, have looked at it and it's, you know, it's conservative at this point. We don't really know what the demand will be. And it's really hard to project that.
Yeah.
So we'll have a better idea, you know, if, if we do become certified for CEP at those four buildings, really what it would look like for an entire school year.
And I think it's just kind of messaging to the community too in terms of, we should have Mark Adam here, but, you know, in terms of why we're doing it this way and what the parameters are and the budget constraints at this point.
Right.
I'll work with Mark Adam on that once we know the status of the application. Yeah, I think, I think we can do a.
It's dense with numbers and information.
Right.
Yep, yep.
I'll submit the application tomorrow. It, it's probably about a two-week approval. We can start the first day of the month after the approval. So if it's a quick turnaround time at State Ed, December 1st, if not January 1st, we'd be looking to start.
Thank you, Galen. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you so much.
So the next item is the strategic vision goals and objectives that we developed for our 23, 24 from our board retreat and some work with the administration. You can see those here. Did you want to just briefly go through changes?
Yeah. Yeah. Our central office team captured the notes and the feedback from the board retreat and we made some revisions to the board goals from last year. I'll just hit some highlights. The first goal, which was in the category of future-driven education, we made some modification to that to clearly delineate that in three different areas, we're focused on being future-driven. The curriculum, being innovative in our curriculum, board members were concerned that we differentiate for students. So differentiating the instructional program and modernizing our school facilities, which is part. So we think we captured. So, we think we captured a better sense of curriculum instruction, differentiating and modern facilities in the future-driven education statement, trying to fit what the board's feedback was in various areas. Board of Education goal on the left hand of the first future-driven, we, it's basically the same. But on the side where we've categorized some priorities for this year and objectives, we had talked about engaging our community in developing a portrait of a graduate, which was a project that we learned about at AAS A learning 2025, where we engage our stakeholders in identifying what are the skills? What's the knowledge? What are the aspirations, character traits? That we want all of our graduates when they leave the district to acquire. And that's a project that we're hoping to do through the Education Committee. There was also some discussion about making sure that we are looking into strategies and resources to differentiate and enrich and personalize learning for students. And so, we captured that in an objective for this year. To begin to look at resources, strategies, working with our administrators, our teachers, and professional development on differentiation, enrichment and personalization of learning, which will be part of AASA 25 as well. Middle school initiative, we started a middle school comprehensive initiative. The board is supportive of that. We want to continue to move forward with that. We had a lot of discussion regarding transitions of students. What can we do to help our elementary students transition more successfully to the middle school? And what can we do to help our middle school students transition more to the high school? So, we picked that as a focus area for this year. And we also included, the last one was development of facilities improvements, which provide for future-driven teaching, learning and extracurricular environments for students, educators and community. And we listed, we want to develop and obtain community approval of the capital project by the spring of 2024. Fair words out there. And begin submission to SED by the fall of 2024. So, that was under the area of future-driven education. I guess I'll stop there and see if anybody has any comments.
I thought that captured a lot of what we talked about. Am I reading in my notes? Questions, comments? Okay.
All learner focus, we have our goal related to increasing graduation rate. And Mr. Stiles has been working with department chairs and the principal on increasing the percentage of graduates with advanced regions diplomas by passing eight or more regions exams. We want to put the criteria in there. We also talked about educating students and families, caregivers about the pathways that are available. Perhaps being more clear and coherent, doing a better job of making sure that our students know the multiple pathways and options that are available for kids to graduate from school, high school. We talked about the advanced regions diploma designation, but we've also heard about the SEAL civic readiness and the SEAL bi literacy and other credentialing that students can graduate with. Flowing from that, the board has always been concerned about making sure that we provide programs, pathways for students that are not going to go to college, that want to pursue the trades and different careers in technical fields. And so, we listed that as a specific goal. And we started some conversations today. I revisited with the high school administrators and our director of BPS. What are we currently doing in areas such as working with the trade unions and other resources to expose kids to those fields? Ways that we can have better information, more updated information for families and students? Working on our website, which is going through a refresh right now, and exploring pre-apprenticeship programs that include partnerships with Questar, OCS and the trade union. So, we have some things that have been in place. We're looking to expand on it and provide more information to students. Traditionally, we want to continue to increase our percentage of our students that are scoring level three, which is proficient, level four, which is above proficiency. I'm not sure what the word is now. Exceeding proficiency, New York State ELA math and science assessments. This is the first year of a new format for the science exam at the elementary school and the middle school. And we want to continue to review the student performance data, continue to develop goals for improvement across all student groups. And then, see, I didn't forget about the pre-K program. Evaluate the pre-K program. And there were two issues discussed with the pre-K program by the board. Measuring the academic progress of the students who are participating in our pre-K program and also preparing a feasibility study to evaluate the sustainability of a pre-K program and potential expansion. And I've already reached out to CASDA, which is the Capital Association School Development Agency that has consultants. They've worked with us in the past. And I'm meeting with Lee Bordic to talk about, a lot of people know Lee Bordic about doing this study. Roy, Jennifer and myself met with Mike Piccirillo, who's the director of CASDA the other day. Very interested in giving us a proposal and I scheduled a time with Lee Bordic, who's a retired well-regarded superintendent in the area, to do that study. And I told him that we needed it by mid-February. So, that's basically whole learner focus.
Comments? I think we captured a lot there too.
Mark?
When we talk about promoting, supporting the expansion of pathways for students to pursue the trades. Can we get rid of the word four-year college degree?
Sure.
Or four-year and just, you know, does not require higher education? You know, because we have two-year degrees, we have four-year degrees.
We can change that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right. Thank you. And lastly, the safe, inclusive and diverse.
One thing I forgot under the, I guess I forgot, old child is, we've talked in the past about tracking our student behaviors and gathering some data. Mr. Stiles, principals and Peter Goodwin have worked with at Vista. I am now able to access the data as the superintendent and look at categories of behavior. So, I will be working with administrators and staff to try to figure out a data report that I can provide to board more consistently. And then, a big area is professional development, mental health, social emotional learning. And recommendation was to change the wording to be trauma-informed practices. So, we made that change, which is a better way to characterize what we want. We want all of our teachers and staff to be able to recognize the signs of children who have been, either have mental, present mental health issues. We're emphasizing social emotional learning through the committee's work in the pilot and trauma-informed practices. We've done a lot of work with that and will continue to do my work with that.
I have a question. Not so much directly about the goals and objectives themselves. But I just always wonder when I read social emotional, just how are we measuring our success towards it? And if we don't have a way, is it possible for us to develop a way just to say that, you know, like having a feedback will just say how effective is what we're putting in place and working towards, you know, improvement?
I'm going to let Mr. Stiles comment on that because he's been using the CASL framework with the staff on the committee and we've got some pilots going on that.
Yeah. So, you're right. There probably is not, you know, one way to measure, you know, how your social emotional learning practices with, you know, district-wide are effective. So, you know, really trying to use multiple measures in terms of, you know, student behavior, you know, behavior referrals, you know, referrals that we may see for students that need, you know, some additional counseling or those pieces. But it's really kind of an ongoing process in terms of, you know, what do we have in place within each building? And then, how can we have something more district-wide, you know, that we can say that all of our students K, really pre-K through 12, you know, what's the continuum look like at the tier one level for social emotional learning? And then tier two and tier three for students who need additional support.
I also wondered about like surveys, like, and the only reason why I mentioned it is because like, I just think sometimes when I think about references for, it sounded like administrative heavy to me. And I was just wondering, just like a true, you know, how are students feeling, you know, about their learning environment or about their peers or about life? And I just wonder just, you know, just that side of it too sometimes.
So, last year through the PD committee, we did have a little bit of a discussion around kind of different surveys. Do we want to survey students or faculty? So, last year we decided to begin by surveying faculty on needs that they have to help guide our professional development. But I can talk to the PD committee to see if, you know, we want to maybe do something in terms of survey, you know, to students as our next step.
Thank you. We have had presentations through Questar meetings with superintendents and assistants of various research-based surveying tools that are available to survey children. And it's been a conversation in terms of, you know, how we, how we map out a plan for SED, starting with the teachers and then getting them familiar with what we're promoting in terms of social emotional learning skills and then moving to the next step and how we're assessing, you know, what the impact is on the children.
I think a lot has talked about that. EAV, doing the research and looking across the national research company that can provide support and tools maybe that we could utilize. It can give you a problem.
Safe, inclusive and diverse, promote practices that support a safe welcoming culture where all children, families and employees feel like they belong and experience success. We want to continue to evaluate and enhance district school safety policies and practices in all schools and at all school-sponsored activities. The board has asked that we review the current School Resource Officer Program for potential enhancement. And we are going to be preparing some budgetary and program options for the board to take a look at as part of the budget cycle. We do now have membership in the National Association of School Resource Officers for each of our SROs, for myself as a district membership. They have some lesson planning resources for us to take a look at at various developmental, developmental levels. And it was rather inexpensive. Ensuring a culture of inclusion for all students and families. Addressing policies, practices and school activities to provide an inclusive environment. We want to monitor our policies to ensure that they are providing inclusivity, equity and diversity, valuing diversity. We are in the process of identifying new families and getting them involved in our school groups and activities. We had a conversation about peer mentoring with our administrators and actually, some of the work that they're already doing with peer-to-peer work is going to be presented to the board once they get some things in place. I think it's going to be in February or March. Patty Farin is doing a lot of work, assistant principal, with some of the peer mentors. We also have some other teachers that are working with peer mentors with specific kids and looking to highlight what we're doing and let the board know what we are doing at the high school in particular. And, you know, we have a lot of kids that engage in community service. You saw it in the, Mr. Jones's presentation and the presentation on the SEAL of Civic Readiness. And we want to continue to foster that type of community service.
Just a comment, Mr. Simons. Was that the elevating student voices? I think that was at the PD day, the students participated. And Cole and a group of students, I think, were going to approach you, Mr. Harkin, about how we can kind of talk to the board maybe and things like that about that program. Terrific. Yep. Good. Good. Excellent. Yeah.
And to our kids' credit, it was, they attended the program at Questar on a day off.
On their day off. So, very dedicated group of kids and staff too for coming over.
And then in the area of human resources, recruiting, development, promoted, supported diverse pipeline of leaders, educators and support staff, continuing Marissa's effort to participate in expanded recruitment efforts, regional partnerships. We're utilizing different tools now, including LinkedIn. And Marissa's office is in the process now of implementing Recruit Front, which is part of the, one of the applications of the school front program that you approved in the budget last year. So, she's already developing an implementation plan for that, which will also get our, our jobs out there. And we're posting, okay, go ahead, Marissa. Why don't you talk about it?
So, we have an implementation meeting every Tuesday from now until the end of the school year as we transition, moving forward with the entire school module. But our first component was recruiting. And the nice feature about Recruit Front is that we can look to see all applicants in the Recruit Front database. So, if someone didn't necessarily apply to the district, but potentially had interest in working for the district, we're able to gain their resume and cover letter, learn their certification areas. So, we've been, especially for some of our leaves of absence and special education, we've had a few maternity leaves that are upcoming and that are current. We've been able to pinpoint some of those candidates with those special education certification areas and reach out to them and make, you know, a meaningful effort to get to know them and see if they might be looking for some employment in our school district. And the implementation coordinator has been very, very welcoming and just is able to answer all of our questions. So, it's been a good process so far.
So, with the exception of the change, do you eliminate four-year college? Are there any other suggestions for revisions?
Appreciate the work.
So, we'll make that change and then we'll ask the board to approve a resolution at the next board meeting to approve the goals for the 23, 24. I appreciate all of the board's participation in the retreat and your input into the goals.
Thank you. The next item is, sorry, that was my spot, the business office support.
Yes. We didn't tell our new director of business and finance, Jennifer Mulligan, when we hired her, that she was going to lose three or four people, that somebody was on a leave. And we have been without some key positions in the business office. And payroll and insurance, we're moving forward tonight. We are recommending a payroll specialist and an insurance technician tonight. We have a person on maternity leave that handles, I believe, accounts payable. And we've had, we have a brand-new extra classroom treasurer, among other things that have happened. So, Jen, being a very diligent person, wants to make sure that the business office new personnel has adequate training. And in order to provide that training, both Jen and Mary Rizzi, who are both very skilled, need to provide that training and that takes them away in some ways from their other duties, involved in planning the budget, managing the budget, et cetera. So, Jen came to me and said, I've got a temporary ask for a CPA to come in that she is familiar with her work on a contracted basis to fill some gaps. And I'll let you take it from there.
So, we're very excited that we are bringing on new team members. So, feel very fortunate that we finally gotten to this point of having a team that we can build and mold. But as Mr. Simon said, you know, there's going to be a long road ahead of getting the team up to full capacity. And Ms. Tiffany Morris, she's, does a lot of accounting services in the area for other school districts and happens to be a former colleague that goes way back to my college days and working in public accounting. And she is available to provide some assistance about a day or a day and a half a week to help do some of those daily tasks that our treasurer does. And we really want to make sure that, you know, we are behind on a lot of things at the moment. You know, our audit ended up off-cycle. So, we want to be able to continue and not dig a deeper hole, but make sure we stay current and get caught up the best we can. I don't know if this is 100% of the solution. You know, we also have exercise utilization of some of the Questar three state aid planning, planners to help with some things as well. And they may be able to help in other ways as well. But we're looking for Ms. Morris to help us out over the next few months.
Will she train the new folks or just?
No, she's gonna, she, she, she's an expert at everything in treasury work. So, she'll be basically taking care, taking care of anything that Mary can delegate to her. So, Mary can, and myself can focus on onboarding the new staff on the district policies and procedures. So.
I'm just curious, Jen, when you say treasury, like in a school or district, is that like investment in cash management? Like, I'm just wondering, like, what does it mean in the school or district sense?
So, in this case, we'd be. So in this case, we'd be, she'd be helping with doing bank reconciliations and the treasurer reports. She'd be helping book some general journal entries to our general ledger, possibly filing some grant reports that are due, financial reports that are due in the next couple of months. Areas that are typical of a lot of school districts. So, but yes, the treasury function in a school district has to do with, you know, investing and managing the cash as well as maintaining the accounting records of the district.
Any questions?
Yeah, have we looked at her hourly rate and incomparable to any comps out there?
I'll have to defer to Jennifer on that. She's an experienced CPA, and I think that reflects the rating.
Yes, her, her hourly rate, she is an independent contractor. She is at $120 an hour. She's an expert in this particular area. When, over the summer, we had Mr. Carmen in very temporarily. There's a limited pool of people that do this interim specialized work that can come in and just hit the ground running.
So probably not. I mean, it's so specialized. It sounds like there's not a lot of comparables to go after.
It's a short, it's a short-term arrangement and it's not, not to exceed, it's not to exceed a month.
125 hours or $15,000.
Right. So 125 hours total was part of the agreement, not to exceed $15,000.
I just think if, in moving forward, it's like a short-term thing, but if we ever bring people on, I prefer to always have, you know, like, not just handpick some one individual. I think it, it's better for the district always to have an idea of what else is there and the other qualms that people have. So.
It is best practice to do an RFP or at least a quote process, you're correct. The nature of this being short-term, you know, and then secondly, you know, just the timing of all the folks and the timing it would take to do a RFP. This is permitted by law. It's a, it's a.
Professional services.
This is contract.
You're not required by law to do an RFP or admit for professional services. It is best practice, but in this particular set of circumstances, we thought we have somebody that Jen has confidence in.
One, one, one thing I just thought about, like, and maybe not this one, but maybe in the future. But I always look at, like, I was saying earlier, like, spending as an opportunity to think strategically, just, just about, you know, our functions as an administration broadly. And just, you know, is there a way to also utilize services and maybe expand them to think about streamlining, mapping out business functions, and maybe finding ways that we could permanently, over the long run, find efficiencies? And I just liked the idea.
You, you, you said exactly what Jennifer said to me maybe three weeks ago or four weeks ago, that she would, she wants to do that. She wants to get to the point where she can evaluate all the roles and responsibilities in the Business Office and see if we can be, approach things differently. Because of the holes in the department, she hasn't been able to do that. She's been doing a lot of.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of.
Employees' work.
Yeah. Yeah. There's, there's a lot of missed opportunities at the moment and want to really be able to move forward to be able to accomplish some of the goals that I had set out, you know, prior, just prior to arriving here. So.
Will she be working in the office? She'll be.
She'd be here one day a week and she would be doing some remote work.
That's what I mean, yeah.
She would be doing some remote work too.
Some remote, mostly onsite.
Doing both. She's going to be doing both. Going to be onsite and also doing some remote work.
The remote thing concerns me.
It certainly is. There will be an accounting for her work. Her work is getting done. There are, there are statutory timelines. There are regulations, there are policy timelines and.
And knowing there's a shortage of accountants out there, probably lucky to have somebody that can do it. Working for a CPA firm, I know that.
Right. When do you want her to start? Tomorrow?
Um.
About a week ago.
A couple of weeks ago. So we're in the process of trying to coordinate schedules, so she'd probably be starting, doing some work, if not next week, the following week.
So is there a way that we can, if there's, everybody's in, in agreement to move it to the consent agenda from the discussion to the consent agenda?
Well, the board doesn't usually approve professional services contracts, correct? I mean, who's going to sign the contract?
You don't even need to.
You don't need to. It's just more of a, it was really, when we've talked about this, is the, the challenges with the staffing, new people coming on board, professional services contract, just having that conversation because it involves personnel to make sure that the plan is solid and the board had an opportunity to at least weigh in. But that she can go ahead and do it, right? If Tiffany's available, right away? Okay. Yeah. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I just, if we're expanding district front, I just want to make sure the board's.
Yep.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Then let us see how things are going.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to move through some things quick here. Regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Questions or comments? Need a motion to approve? Joanne, second Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Next item. We have the resolution authorizing the partial segment of the vaping litigation. Any questions or comments on that? We talked about this quite a bit. Need a motion to approve that. Anyway. Michelle, second Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved. And next item was a revision to the memorandum, memorandum of understanding, just a quick, I think it's just a cross out there, right, Mr. Simons? With that red line under the vision. Looks like the vision part, right?
So the, there was a new addition to the memorandum of understanding under the vision insurance component. And it originally said that the dependent coverage, the district would contribute 50% of the individual premium plus 100% of the differential between individual and family. It should have read employees electing family or dependent coverage will contribute 50% of the individual premium rate plus the employee will contribute 100% of the differential.
Of the district.
So we just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And Jennifer Mulligan has met with all of the management confidential employees to notify them of the error that occurred. And they are comfortable with the adjustment and understand that.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? Cheryl, second? Anybody? Emily, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to the committee reports. What's our Marissa?
Thank you, Mr. Bino. A couple key instructional vacancies. One of our business teachers, they are going to be retiring in January of 2024. This position has been posted and we already have two applicants. We still are.
It's Donna, right? Is that Donna?
Yeah.
Yeah. Donna Shepersen, sorry.
We are still looking for an earth science teacher and we are working collaboratively with Mr. Harkin to find solutions to that. There was a need for an occupational therapist district-wide. The application deadline is November 13th, and we do have candidates for that position. And then our technology teacher at Goff, his last day is coming up. And we are going to be recommending tonight a new technology teacher to take on that role. Mr. Fox is a retiree. He holds the Industrial Arts Certification. So we are moving forward with a recommendation for his appointment. Mr. Fox is a part-time teacher in the district. He teaches digital literacy to our sixth graders. So we'll be looking to backfill that position. We have a couple of teaching assistant positions that we're currently recruiting for, for non-instructional vacancies. We still have an ongoing continuous recruitment posting for automotive mechanics. Right now, we're down two. We have a head custodian retirement coming up at Red Mill Elementary School. That application deadline is November 12th. And Mr. Goodwin and I finished the final round interviews for database specialist. We do have a selected candidate. We're hoping to bring that recommendation at the next board meeting. And then our payroll specialist, we were able to make an offer of employment that individual accepted, and that is on tonight's addendum. Does anyone have any questions about staffing? I also had a committee meeting with our Appendix D folks. We came together last week because we received a request to add a new club at Red Mill Elementary School. One of our social workers, Ms. Petromellus, would like to begin a student council club. The club opportunity will meet 12 times during the school year and we expect 35 to 40 student participants. Our committee unanimously agreed to move the club forward as an unpaid club for board approval at tonight's meeting. And we also, at our committee meeting, reviewed the unfilled Appendix D clubs. And we had a conversation about repurposing those monies associated with those unfilled clubs with the possibility of providing compensation to unpaid Appendix D clubs that have been board-approved in October. So our next step is going to be reaching out to those unpaid club advisors who have been running their unpaid clubs for at least a year to gather some information to be considered by the committee, such as number of student participants, number of meetings held per month, summary of the club's mission, the goals, initiatives, any fundraising or financial activities involved. And we will be reviewing this information at our next meeting, which will be November 16th. Any questions on that?
How was that meeting, Joanne? Very good. Appendix D. Thank you for participating in that again. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Marissa. Jennifer?
Yes, on Monday, we had our Finance and Audit Committee meeting. I'm pleased to report we were able to present our draft financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2023. Our auditor attended the meeting and shared that we received an unmodified clean opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest level opinion on, on financial reports. She went through the financial statements. There were no disagreements with management. She went through the required communications. The audit also included the audit of federal awards. And there were no findings or question costs in that report. Also, there was the audit of the Extra Classroom Activities Fund, and that also was issued as an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. However, there were a couple of findings on some cash dispersments where a check didn't contain a second signature. And there was some supporting documentation missing from another payment. Ms. Ritzy has already implemented a corrective action plan. We do have a new Extra Classroom Treasurer that's being trained. And also our faculty claims auditor is also involved in reviewing the claim dispersments on a monthly basis to ensure that, you know, all checks have the proper signatures. So we were very pleased to, you know, have the draft audit reports. It's going through the quality control process at the, at our audit firm. And we are expecting final statements by next Wednesday, which is the 15th, which means we'll be in compliance with our state aid claims and our state aid payments will flow as normal. And the audit will be presented at the December 6th board meeting for acceptance by the board.
Any questions, Jen? No? Thank you, Jennifer. Roy?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Bino. On October 23rd, we had a professional development committee meeting. We had a discussion and review of our opening days that we had on professional development. Really, overall, the opening days were really positive, got a really lot of great feedback. We had two excellent keynote speakers in Ray McNulty and Dr. Bill Daggett from ASA Learning 2025 that really kind of are tying into all of our Board of Education goals and are going to help guide, you know, us, you know, not just the remainder of this year, but moving forward. I had a discussion regarding our remaining professional development days since the October 23rd meeting. We actually had our first full PD day on November 1st. Again, really, I thought it was a great day. District-wide, all of our staff participated in craze training with Sergeant Detective Godino from the East Green Bush Police Department. And then from there, the afternoon, Goff Middle School and Columbia High School staff worked with an organization seen here global that we met at last year's NISBA conference and really got a lot of great feedback, you know, from that session. And that's going to be an organization that we're going to continue to work with, you know, not just this year, but again, moving forward with the middle school and high school. And I think that ties in really nicely with some of the SEL work that we're doing at our elementary school. Also, we had a lot of great sessions for our elementary staff. Mr. Goodwin did a great session on AI, artificial intelligence, and how that can begin to support work for, for our teachers. You know, we've got a lot of great things going on at the elementary school and we were able to touch on and support some of that work. And, you know, a session that, you know, was much needed and, and was really good is the upcoming computer-based testing that we have beginning this year with our fifth graders and our eighth graders. Our teachers are, you know, really trying to understand what are some changes that they need to make in terms of, you know, instructional practices to make sure that our students are well-prepared for those exams. So, and that was a great day. We have another, March 15th would be our next full-day professional development, where we'll be working with the Questar Regional PD on that. And then we have two built-in half-days, one on February 6th and one on April 26th. Additionally, we talked about some of the added embedded professional development that we're doing. So we, we really began doing some of that work last year with our Questar, some of our Questar support staff that come in. We've increased that a little bit just because the feedback from our teachers has been, has been really good. You know, for that to be successful, our teachers have to be flexible and really our principals have to be flexible as well because, you know, there's sub-coverage that needs to happen. There's a lot of kind of things that the building needs to do for those days. But we really think that the benefit of those kind of outweighs some of that, you know, sub-issue that we have to deal with. But again, the principals have been, you know, really supportive with that and the teachers, I think, find it beneficial. And then additionally to that, we also are doing some embedded work around SEL. And then just had a discussion regarding some future planning. You know, we really talked about how we want to make sure that our professional development is aligned and supporting our Board of Education goals. And then, you know, just some discussion on what are some needs or, you know, ideas moving forward. And, you know, we always talk about having some targeted needs for our teaching assistants. And we're actually able to offer a great session for our teaching assistants on November 1st. But we want to make sure we keep that group in mind, as well as, you know, our teachers talked about. I have a little bit of a, you know, our ENL students and making sure that we're providing, you know, professional development around ENL for all of our teachers.
Any questions? Questions were right. Always been a robust PD group here, that's for sure. We like to invest in our resources and our, on our staff. Mr. Simons, health and safety.
Yes, real quickly, we had our first Health and Safety Committee meeting on October 23rd. I invited Craig Hanson, who is Chief Emergency Officer at Questar Bosse's, to talk about new resources that are available at Questar to assist school districts in responding to cybersecurity issues, including former state troopers who work in this area. Questar put together a resource for schools of who to call, numbers, et cetera, in the event that we receive something such as a ransom attack. There have been ransom attacks in the capital region. This summer, there was one in a local district in our county. There are some steps you need to take and immediately to protect the district. And Questar is expanding some services in this area for us. So Craig highlighted those services. We also were part of.
I was just curious, Jeff, like, dude, is there insurance for, for, because I hear taxes.
Expensive insurance, that's for sure.
We have a very, we reviewed our insurance coverage specifically, Peter can talk about this because Peter Goodwin did this. We reviewed our policies two or three years ago, and we have actually a, we have separate policy for cybersecurity that is, the thresholds are, are very good, but it is more expensive.
If you want to just briefly.
It's, it's a policy that covers ransomware attacks and these services to help the districts through that, to be able to notification of deadlines.
And some districts have had to hire companies to send letters to those parents, for example, whose data has been, their children's data has been compromised.
for example, whose data has been, their children's data has been compromised. That is allowable coverage sometimes. Legal fees associated with it, bringing in the firms that we have arrangements with to get us back up and running, and all those things are kind of fall under the umbrella of our cybersecurity insurance policy. So it increased dramatically, these, uh, these cyber attacks during COVID when everybody was online. Uh, and they can seize up all of your computers, and until such time as you pay, you have no access. There's also a county-wide threat assessment process that has just started with somebody from the state who is working with Renzer County. I did participate in the first meeting of that. They're trying to put together representation from towns, municipal government, law enforcement, school districts, various county Department of Health to have an agreement to share information about potential threats within the county. It's just, it's a process that started, uh, in September. We've had one meeting, and, um, it's part of the state's response, New York State's response to the shooting incident in Lofol that occurred at the Tops Grocery Store. And we're still learning about what our role might be in that. Swatting incidents, we talked about swatting incidents. We're still getting emails, not us, but schools. Got a call last night from law enforcement, check your email. Another neighboring law enforcement agency had contacted East Green Bush Police. Thankfully, we didn't get it. We texted all of our administrators, they got back to me right away. But there are organizations that are doing this. And, uh, just making everybody aware that this is still occurring. SROs gave a report on the activities that they're working on within their respective buildings. We checked in with principals and how the lockdown fire drills were going. We're on target to meet those requirements. We talked about continuing to raise mental health awareness. Nurses have reported very limited activity, thankfully, regarding COVID and the flu. The volume is not unmanageable at this point. And we have implemented, uh, we are implementing this week, I believe, and the principals can nod their head if I'm correct, the Student Finder? Or is it starting Monday? Starting Monday. So we rolled out some public information regarding Student Finder that Mark Adam put together. The buildings have all received a swipe card that's going to be distributed to students with a little ring that holds it onto their backpack. And this is the program that we talked about two years ago when we weren't able to do seating charts and understand exactly who was on the bus. And electronically, the kids go on the bus, they swipe their card, and then the data is available to the transportation department as to who is riding. There'll be a learning curve with this. We know that kids are going to lose their cards. Kids are not going to be prevented from getting on the bus. We'll issue them a new card. But we're, we think that in the event of an emergency or some kind of other issue that we experience, it's good to have data on who's riding on that particular bus that day. It's not foolproof, but it is better than the system that we currently have. There might be situations, for example, where a different bus is assigned to a route because of a mechanical issue or something like that. And there'll be, there'll be gaps that we might not be able to be 100%.
So are they already on the buses, the swipe?
The zone machines that were, have, were put out, were actually installed, and I think that was completed last year. Took a little, uh, time getting up and running with the shortage of mechanics and some other issues that we experienced. That is starting. And that's, that's the health and safety committee meeting that we had on October 23rd.
Jeff, have we received any, uh, I think the last time we seen something was in April for the stop art cameras, the data.
I have not. I'll have to check on that and hope, I'll provide that to the board. Last conversation I had about that was I had reached out about the signs. And, um, I was, I received a map as to where the signs were notifying people that we were enforcing this, but I haven't really followed up on the data, but I will.
Okay. Very good. Moving on the agenda, table motions, there's none at this time? All business, board members, anything? No? Good. So consent agenda, I know there's someone who probably has to pass something polled. So that's item B, right, Joanne? Yep, so I'll pull item B. And I would ask the board, there's a lot of consent agenda items, and to include the addendums, which have the recent hires that we talked about, some coaching, as well as the payroll specialist position. So any questions or comments on the consent agenda items, including the addendums?
Mine, I'm going to need to abstain from J.
J, okay. So I'm just making out of that. We want to do a separate vote on that? Or just abstain from the?
What's ever easier for you?
Okay, we'll, we'll pull that one. Okay, so all items except for B and J? Need a motion to approve? Michelle, second Mark, all those in favor? All items but B and J? There you go. You're good. Approved. And then, need a motion to approve item B? Cheryl, second, Jennifer, all those in favor? All those abstaining, one, Joanne, approved. And then item J? Need a motion to approve that? Joanne, second, Emily, all those in favor? All those abstaining, one, Jennifer? Okay. All right. Everything is approved. And congratulations to Donna, she's retiring. I mentioned that earlier. We saw her at the last meeting, and we wish her well. So we're up to new business, board members, anything? Public forum? Not a lot of folks left. Nothing, Mr. Greer, no? Okay. It's late, I'm tired, I'm sorry. What's that? What's that? You say something? Oh, sorry, so these guys are, well, it's not on your there, huh? I got it, all right. Yeah, I guess I'm going to get a little punch. Board forum, starting my rate with Emily? Nothing? Joanne, second? Jess? Jennifer? Mr. Van?
Again, Mr. Garb, thank you so much for all of this tonight. It was very much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Michelle? Good, Michelle, good. So there's several, um, Veterans Day recognitions happening right across our schools.
Yes.
And so if you are interested and want to attend one, I'll become a Green Meadow. I move my calendar, Mr. Greer, or Mr. Garb, so we're good. I'll be here tomorrow. Mr. Simons, right over here?
Yes.
So if you do want to attend.
He has one at nine, right?
Jenny has one at nine. So all of them in the morning, kind of thing? So if you're near your local school district and you're able to attend, pop in. Tell your principal, it's a great, those are great ceremonies and, um, great events that our community supports. I just want to mention, school boards was excellent, um, a lot of sessions of interest, a lot of good time to bond with our, our newer members, with Jennifer and others, even though they got, took the train home and took forever. One of the things I think we mentioned, we had, we met with Questar, and one of the things Mark talked about was getting together as boards more often and having that facilitated. I talked to Mr. Simons as well, because we want to maybe try to get something together with the Renzer County Boards Group to see if we can do some things more collaboratively, talk about their, their concerns, you know, that's what, Yarra Park, Brunswick, Troy, Renzer, Berlin, just to see kind of what are they facing, even though it's a rural suburban city districts. We all have issues, and I think if we can get some of the boards together. There have been in the past different county associations for board members, but Renzer County mine has never had one. So maybe some things, I know they're talking about regional transportation things and your colleagues, you got, your colleagues meet in Renzer County, so.
I'm going to bring that up to the superintendents at our next meeting.
We do have need for, we have a session for purposes of contractual and personnel histories, and we may come back in session afterwards, so, okay? To vote on one item. So with that, have a great night. Thank you, everyone.